President of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the great and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to grant Westcat permission to videotape the meeting and ask if anyone else wishes to record the meeting. All right, same on, we'll move along. On the chairman's update, we have two things this evening. First, we have to invite the public to the Groi London Humanitarian Award Ceremony, which we held on Thursday, April 28th, at 7:00 in the community room at the Westwood Public Library. The award will be presented to this year's recipients. Secondly, we would like to remind our residents that the town election will be held on Tuesday, April 26th. Polls open at 7:00 in the morning and will close at 8:00 in the afternoon, excuse it in the evening. The last day registered to vote was April 6th, when our annual town election articles were presented at the annual town meeting. Clerk's office held a special registration session on April 6th, from 8:30 in the morning until 8:00 PM, for any resident who was not registered prior to that time. Now, we'll move along to our scheduled action, and of course, the reason most of you are here is to find out about a public information session about the East Street Bridge redesign. At this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Jollet, and then to Peter for a presentation.
Okay. You'll have to bear with us a little bit. We have a couple of video clips that we thought would work right into the PowerPoint and just go on when we got to that slide, and then we tested the system out, and we found that didn't work, so we're going to ad lib it here. I'm here to make some introductory comments about the East Street Bridge and why it is that we've been working with the MBTA and Mastard to reconstruct that bridge. And we're going to start out with the two types of accidents that occur. And the first type of accident occurs because there's a granite curb that jogs into the street a bit, because the bridge comes at it in an angle, and that is, that granite curb is there to protect the pedestrians from being struck when they're on the sidewalk. Like that causes head-on accidents to occur. They bounce off that granite curb into the oncoming traffic. But the last one that occurred went right into the bridge replacement, and there was no cars coming in either direction. And the second type of accident is one we're all more familiar with, because we've seen the video clips on TV, where it's when a truck strikes the bridge because it's too high. You notice all of the bridges fell right onto that sidewalk. So, the most serious concerns that we have are that injuries will occur from those head-on collisions when they hit, when cars strike the granite curb. Injuries could occur to a pedestrian or a cyclist when a truck hits the clearance. The impact of commuter, there's also a fear by the MBTA about what the impact would be on commuter trains, if a commuter train were just to be crossing the bridge at the same time that the bridge is struck. There's an inability to provide emergency services throughout the time that we're clearing accidents from underneath the bridge, whether of either kind. So anything east of the East Street Bridge has to go around the neighborhood, not into the neighborhood, to provide, say, medical attention to anyone. There's a fear of the possibility of a chemical spill that would require evacuation. We became familiar with that with the MBTA. This picture is an MBTA bus with gas on the roof, and that gas tank punctured and led to the evac, it's natural gas, I mean, and led to the evacuation of the entire neighborhood, including Mark's brothers. When we're involved in these accidents, we're tying up all of the town's resources, so they're not available anywhere else in town to respond to other accidents. And then the last thing that we're concerned was the fact that we pay special price for all of our fire equipment, so that we can have it pass underneath. Recently, we bought a ladder truck, and that ladder truck had to be specially fit to fit underneath that bridge. We became very concerned when the MBTA hit the, hit the bridge in the gash leak. At that time, the board was selecting, ordered the staff, the DPW staff, the fire department, police department, myself, Mike met with Mr. Schwartz, who's here in the room today at the MBTA, who alerted them that we were very concerned about the bridge and the impact it was having and the dangers that it posed for the community. Prior to that, we actually spent $40,000 on re-signing, this is the plan, to re-sign the entire approach from both ends, to see if we couldn't reduce the amount of trucks that were striking that bridge by giving them better signage. We'll never know if it did reduce. The hope is that some trucks didn't, didn't hit the bridge because of those signs, but it evidently didn't do a lot, because at least a half a dozen trucks have struck that bridge since we put the signs in. The MBTA and Mastard's commitment since that bridge, I just spoke that in 2012, we went and met with Mr. Schwartz at the MBTA, who's in charge of all of the capital improvements that were made at the MBTA. At that meeting, he showed us all the projects that they had and the limited funds that they had available, and didn't give us much hope that we could get the bridge replaced. However, he gave us good indication as to exactly how we should go about it, how we should proceed. We followed his instructions. We also sent him videotapes of every accident that happened from that meeting on, to remind him of the importance and other MBTA officials. In 2014, we were alerted by the MBTA and Mastard, that they had reconsidered matters, and they committed, that they were also wanting to replace that bridge because of safety concerns, so they committed to giving us the design money and the funding. BHB has since been selected as a design consultants, and they prepared the 15% plan that we're going to see here tonight, to present to you as to what they've come up with for alternatives, and so before they move on to the 25% design scheme, which would be their public hearing with you in the future. Peter Paravellus is here tonight. He was recently named a Director of Transit-Oriented Development for the MBTA. He will oversee the private development in and around the city of Boston, as it relates to current and future MBTA infrastructure. He has over 20 years of structural engineering and project management experience, prior to joining the MBTA, and has been a project manager with the MBTA for almost three years. He's a project manager for the East Street Bridge project through the 15% design phase. A new project manager will be named to this, but Peter will continue to oversee this project since he has a personal interest. He's a resident of the community, and on a number of boards here in Westwood. John Schwartz is here tonight as well. He's the MBTA Director of Bridge and Common Projects, and he'll continue to administer the project. So, with that introduction, I introduce Peter to you.
Hi, everyone. Like Mike said, I'm a resident of the town. Hello. So, like Mike said, I am a resident of the town. I've been here since 2008. I live over near the Sheen School in town with my family. So, what was I about the East Street Bridge? So, the goals of the project was to improve the vertical clearance of the East Street Bridge, to try and maximize this best that we could. To do that, we had to do with the combination of minimizing the structure depth, that is the, what you see here, is the depth of the structure, how deep the steel beams are, lowering the roadway, and actually raising the track. So, the combination of those three aspects, we're going to improve the vertical clearance of the East Street Bridge. We're also looking to improve the width of the bridge, to eliminate the narrowing of the road. It's like an hourglass shape, as you approach, like Mike spoke about, the curb is normally hit here, then hit the other side of the traffic. So, we are going to try to straighten the road in addition to increasing vertical clearance. Two travelings with adequate shoulders will be provided, and two sidewalks, sidewalks on either side of the bridge. Some of the existing conditions, the year that we built this bridge is 1911, and so it's, it's just about at its end of its useful life, so it's, it's ready to be replaced. It's a two-track, two-track structure, so there are two, two sets of rails that are going, but one set of rails, two sets of rails going over. There's northbound and southbound, it's on the Franklin Line. The roadway narrows at about 19 feet curb-to-curb. There's two sidewalks there now, if you can call one a sidewalk, it's about one and a half inches wide, and there's a three-foot sidewalk as well. And vertical clearance currently is 10 foot 6 inches. According to the Westwood Police Department, there have been 81 accidents reported from 2009 and 215, and 2015 to the bridge. There are various utilities. We have overhead utilities that are way up high, up here, way up here, and then there's also utilities that go from this pole down, under the bridge, and then come back up, and there's also utilities in the roadway. So, looking at the existing conditions of the bridge, there are some challenges as far as geometry and the track structure around the bridge. So, there is a curved approach, coming from, from up here, as you head towards Islington, it's on a curve. Also, there are a couple of bridges nearby. There's the, there's the bridge here on Route 1, there's the Everett Bridge down here, Everett Street Bridge down here. So, there are some issues as far as what can be done. With the proximity of Islington Station, you can't really raise the track. The reason why is, if you raise the track, we'll trigger a whole bunch of ADA issues. We'll have to put in new platforms, upgrade the station, parking, completely redesign the station, but obviously, can't do that. Another couple of issues, the bridges that are there now, the two existing, the Everett Street and the Route 1 Bridge. If we raise the track, you have to add ballast, the stone is under the tracks. When you, when you raise the track, the ballast, it actually, the raising of the track occurs over a very long distance. So, to raise it, we would add ballast, which means we would also have to add ballast to the Everett Street Bridge, and add ballast to the Route 1 Bridge, which would increase the loading on the bridges. So, then we would have to investigate whether the bridges can also carry additional ballast load with the elevated tracks. Again, we're not looking to do that. The proposed roadway for the bridge, you can see kind of what's existing now, where you have this sort of area here. MassDOT recommends, as part of their complete streets design, this type of roadway, 11-foot travel lanes, five-foot shoulders, which is ideal for recycling on either side, and six-foot sidewalks. This is what we're looking to do for East Street. Existing conditions, if we're looking at this, we're looking at a planned view of the bridge, meaning we're looking at, if we're in an airplane looking down over the top of the bridge. What's missing is the actual bridge itself that you can't see, so these are the granite abutments. This is the DPW, which is now the temporary fire station, is over here. School Street's DVS this way, and the East Street Road is up this way, so this is where we are. There's a lot of utilities that are in the, in the road itself, you know, six-inch gas main, 12-inch sewer, eight-inch sewer, 12-inch water main, 12-inch drainage, and there's also a communications duct bank that runs from the center of the street. And of course, the electric lines that I spoke about, that come under the bridge and way above the bridge. The priority for us, the MBTA, is to minimize the impact of existing rail operations. Currently, at this location, our trains tend to slide because of the elevation of the rail. You can't really tell if it's elevated, but it actually is. This is actually at a, at a high point. So, having taken the Franklin Line in the morning, due to the very first train, oftentimes, we will, coming from Norwood Depot, so right now, the way we're facing is we're looking at Islington Station. Islington Station is, is back here. So, we'd be coming from Norwood, and we, the engineer applies the brakes, and we slide right by Islington Station, most of the time, and we have to actually back up into the station. And that's because of, in the wintertime, the weeds and ice and snow. So, we're trying to minimize the amount of elevation to the track. So, to do that, with minimum elevations in track, we will depress the roadway in 16 and 18 inches, and also try to humble the structure that's not as deep as, as what's in place right now. So, another, so this is the proposed roadway and planned profile. So, what we are looking at here is, again, a planned view, as we're up in an airplane looking down, the rotary is up here, this way, School Street is the easy Stratford and Carroll Ave here. This is the new bridge, and what we are going to do, what we plan to do is continue, this sidewalk is here, we'll continue it, it'll go this way, it'll go under the bridge, over the ball field, and this has been modified since, this picture, the walkway, the sidewalk lies to the curb and meet the sidewalk here. And the same thing will happen here, we'll have sidewalks that go all the way under the bridge and connect the Carroll Ave. This picture here, it's kind of a cross-section, if you were to look at the elevation of the road. It looks fairly severe here, but it's scaling, it would actually be not as much as you see here, and you wouldn't actually be driving and all of a sudden have this massive dip. So, for the utility relocation aspect of it, we can see here, this is, again, we're scanning the middle of East Street, and we're looking towards the East Street Rotary, and we're kind of near the bridge. The bridge would be here, of course, it's not showing this picture, here's that sidewalk. The roadway will actually be here, the new roadway, and you can see all the utilities that are in the road, and what will actually be affected. We know the teleduct, duct bank is affected, and some of the other utilities. Not sure about the water and the sewer. We may need to somehow provide coverage as far as frost, but we'll have to look into that. Again, this is just a planned view of all the, of all the utilities. So, the proposed structure, what the bridge will look like. In red, you can see the existing, so in that last picture we were looking at, we're looking at the same picture. Red shown here shows the bridge that we were just looking at, the existing bridge, and you can see the tent that sits clear as to the beam. So, we're looking to raise it to 13 feet 6 inches, and that's from the roadway to the underside of the bridge, and you can see the sidewalks in place, and the new abutments. The 13 foot 6, so Massachusetts Department of Transportation recommends that we, I hate this name, that we, that roads, the clearance around the bridges are designed for 16 foot 6 inches, so you typically see that on the highway. There is a, in addition to that, for local roads, you can, you can reduce the 16 feet 6 to 14 feet 6. And that would be for scale and load, but this is a local road, so that the elevation can actually be set by the town. So, we came up with a 13 foot 6, which is just below the 14 foot 6, and this will allow for your normal box trucks that are hitting the bridge to actually get under the bridge. It will be a tight squeeze for large tractor-trailers. I was told that some tractor-trailers can be 12 foot 6 inches, which would allow them to go under the bridge. I'm also told that there are restrictions in place for trucks, and those restrictions would stay in place. So, I'll save you that. So, the proposed structure is actually going to be, if you want to think of it, two bridges, and the reason why is to minimize the depth of the structure. In the norm, in the normal bridge that we have now, there are three girders. You have one girder, a center girder, and another girder. So, the issue with that is that that center girder is taking up additional load, which makes the girder, the design of the girder be a lot deeper. So, to minimize that, actually have the girder share the load, and split it up into two different structures, very close together. So, it will, it will seemingly look like one bridge, but they're, they're about two feet apart, and there will be a slight gap in the middle. The reason why, again, is because we want to be able to minimize the depth of the structure. So, this is, this is a pretty good indication of what one of the sides will look like. It'll be an identical one to this, right next to it. As far as constructability of the bridge, so here's Islington Station, all the way to about Everett Street. This is the rail, the distance of the rail that will be affected, that will be slightly elevated. This is also, we want to call it the construction zone, how the, how MBTA will, and contracted will access the site on the, on this side here, on the 1A side, they're going to go in through the DPW yard, which I believe, I don't know if they call it Main Street. So, that's the way they would go into the, access that area, and also the construction zone on this side. From East Street itself, they will access it adjacent to the DPW garage, currently the fire station. They'll access the site this way, go up in, and out to the right of way. Lay-down area will be here, along, so you can barely see Islington in the distance, we stand on the southbound side heading towards Norwood. This area here, which is this area, will partially be cleared, trees that are closest to this area, and this will be used as a lay-down area. They're also being used to actually construct the bridges. The bridges will be built beforehand. I'll explain that. Detours, road detours, we expect detours probably for definitely two weekends, but most likely, maybe a couple more days here and there, depending on the type of construction activity. So, these are proposed. Everett Street, continue, you can, you can go on University Avenue, go all the way around, access 95, or you can through Everett, go up Canton Street, and connect that way. Or, another way you can go is down towards Dedham, over a road that is in place, is here. Joe's Bar and Grill is up right there, so you can come here and access the highway that So, I'm going to briefly go through the construction staging. So, the bridge is going to be designed partially as an accelerated bridge construction type. There's going to be a bridge going in in Norwood on Dial Street, probably this summer or fall. This is the bridge that's next to Norwood Central, if you want to watch. The bridge will be replaced over a weekend. This will be similar, but we're looking at two weekends, they might be long weekends, depending on the contractor thinks and how quickly it can be done. So, construction staging, this is with track in service, trains are still running, and this is with also the road in service, so this work maybe is done at night, or there might be one lane closed, one lane open. But basically, the first part of this will be to take the existing utilities and permanently relocate them further down the right of way. So, it'll just be moved out of the way on a permanent basis. It'll be crossing the tracks as they are now, but probably at this elevation, but further down. So, we are looking for, just to orient everyone, we're standing in the middle of East Street, we're looking up toward the Rotary, we're kind of in front of the bridge. These are the abutments, and this is the bridge that's currently there, and this is the railway. So, the next stage, while the road is still in use, and while the trains are still running, this work might be night work, it might be partially during the, during the day between trains, but the idea is to try to construct the abutments, which are what are going to actually support the bridge, the new bridge, behind the existing abutment. So, this work will be done along the railway. So, we'll be using large drilled shafts, we'll be using H piles, which are essentially, if you've seen the steel column, it looks like an ivy. Basically, we'll be using a series of those, we'll be putting them into the ground, keeping up so that the trains will still run, they'll be put between tracks, and that will continue. So, the first weekend shutdown, so whether it's a long weekend or not, I'm not sure at this point, but the idea here is to, the last train goes through on a Friday night on the rail, the road is closed, the tracks are picked up, this is all excavated, the tops of the abutments are cut off and removed, the bridge is already cut up and removed. Next, this is all during the same weekend, so after that's all done, the abutments, or the cast of the abutments, they're actually, have the bearings, which are the mechanisms that the steel beams actually sit on, will be put into place, and I'll show you the next slide. Tractor trailers will come in with these already made of 15-inch concrete, they're pre-cast, which means they've been cast somewhere else. The concrete is hardened, it's brought in with tractor-trailers to bring it on the site. A large crane comes in and basically lifts them up and puts them into position. This is all during the same first weekend, so this activity might be going on Saturday evening, or sometime during the day on Saturday. These items here, which are rollers, will be used for the bridge, which I'll explain in a minute. So, this is just, again, a planned view of the bridge whilst being constructed. You can see here, tractor trailer with the, the large concrete abutments, they're actually caps to the abutments that the bridge will sit on. The crane will be here, and we'll pick them up from various tractor-trailers and put them into position. The bridge itself, which will be constructed down here, Islington Station is way over here. This is the construction area that's going up, where the bridges will be actually built. They'll be placed on the rail and actually split along the rails, on rollers, into position above the bridge. This is the same weekend we're talking about. So, these are the rollers, this is where the bridges were constructed and placed on the rail, they'll be pushed along, the rollers will pick them up and basically slide them across, they'll be put into position with the help of cranes and whatever equipment is necessary. After that, the rest is laying down an approach slab, there's a concrete approach slab on the right of way, below all the ballast, which basically supports the trains as they come over, creating a transition from ground and stone to stone and harder surface to steel surface. The tracks will be laid back, and the train, either Monday morning, will be coming through, or it's a long weekend, Tuesday morning, the first train will come through and actually At this point, the road, so right after this stage, the road may actually, will actually grow, depending on when the next weekend will, I doubt it will be successive weekends. So, after this has happened, and the trains are now going, the road will also be opened up to traffic. The second weekend shutdown, which will happen at some point after that, the road again will be closed, the train will be in service, we will not be interrupting service while this is going on. So, with the road closed, equipment will come in, they'll remove the existing abutments. They'll remove the existing abutments. They work through some abutment work as well. So once the, the abutments are removed, panels and so forth will be, will be constructed along this. This is what the road will look like. Then after that, through a series of, of staging as far as traffic, moving traffic around, all this, all this. At this, at this point here, what will happen is, they can possibly open a portion of this to traffic while the other portion is being worked on. And the goal here is to start excavating and actually burying all the utility and laying in the new road. And that's basically what the bridge will look like when it's complete, if we're facing the East Street road. Next steps, we're looking at design phase through November of sixteen to be complete. That's kind of aggressive at this point. We're hoping that's the case. If not, it would be early spring of two thousand and seventeen, followed by construction procurement, just getting all the pieces in place to actually build it. And then starting construction, I would say, in the summer of two thousand and seventeen. Again, it's kind of aggressive, but we think we can do it if not the summer, then the fall of seventeen. Installation of the actual bridge, probably in the spring or summer of two thousand and eighteen. And that's where we're at right now. Take questions? Should I take questions, or should I have to sit?
Why don't you take questions, though, pretty quick?
Oh, sure.
So anybody that's interested in asking a question, please identify yourself, I'll give you the microphone. Please identify yourself, who you are, which street you live on, so we can record who's asking questions. And then either the Boris Lepman or Peter, who answers the question. So our first question.
Thank you. My name is Rory Magnusson. I live on School Street. Maybe I'll back up a little bit. I have two questions. First is, is this a definite go? Or is there any chance that this won't go? And my second question is, where the roadway gets lowered down under the bridge, are there any concerns about stormwater drainage, you know, collecting pools of water there, which, under heavy rain condition?
As, as far as the MDTA is concerned, we do have the funding in place for the replacement of the bridge, for design and the actual construction. So there's no reason why we can't move forward with it, and we are expecting that it will move forward. As far as the drainage for the road, the drains will be modified. There is a nearby storm drain there now. The drainage will be modified to accept any additional stormwater, which of course it will, to take care of that issue as far as drainage.
Hi, thank you for your work. My name is Tanya Corey-Chopper, and I'm on Strapper Road. So I'm right there. I hear the accidents every week. So I appreciate what you're doing, but I, we have two concerns and just from the neighborhood. Of course, the first one is the large trucks that will be coming through. We don't want this to be a truck. It's an easy thing from ninety-five to 1A. It's a very easy cut-through. And we don't want our neighborhood to be a cut-through with all these huge trucks. And by, you know, the thirteen-six, maybe that's hopefully going to discourage some of the trucks, the larger and larger ones. That's just what I, you said there were restrictions in place, and I don't know of any truck that listens to restrictions. I'm not sure what the restrictions are, who hears them, or how they, how that works.
It is a large road.
Yeah, I guess so. So that's my first concern. The second concern was, our whole neighborhood really thrives with the Islington Station. It's very, very important to the neighborhood. It, it drives the property values. People go into and out of Boston every day. I just want to make sure that there's no talk about moving Islington Station, which is a very big concern as well. So, thank you.
So I'll answer the second one first. Islington Station is not moving. There's no plans to move it. There was some talk of possibly moving it, but that's not something the MDTA was thinking of funding. It was, it was outside interest. I can emphatically say that Islington Station is not moving. The second part was the clearances. The thirteen-foot six will allow the box trucks to get through. The, the larger tractor-trailer trucks, I know some of them are less than thirteen-six, some are at thirteen-six. So there are restrictions in place. I believe it's a, it's a weight restriction.
Two and a half tons.
Two and a half tons. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, truck, the bridge is going up three feet. The box trucks will get through larger trucks. I'm not sure they'll want to take a chance and try to come down there. We're not going to advertise that we're not expecting large trucks. I'm trying to think of the trucks that are, that would be servicing the area, and thinking of Roach Brothers, and thinking of CBS. I mean, they, they currently go through from under Everett Street, or they come down to 1A. So I don't know if they'll continue to do that, or change their patterns, but there's nothing that we can, we can do to make them not come through. It'll be up to them, and it'll be up to the navigation systems as far as what's shown, whether it's a bridge that's navigable. Right now, the issue with box trucks is, these are U-Haul trucks. These are trucks that are rented.
Right, that's fine. It's more of the big.
Yeah. So I hope I answered it.
One more question?
Yes.
Just the pedestrian walkways. I appreciate that you're putting walkways in. It's really important, I tell you, with all kids that go to playgrounds, the Morris Field across the street. Are you going to put a pedestrian walkway in between Strapper and Morris Field with the sidewalks there and everything too? That's always a concern, and we raised it also to the town about putting pedestrian walkway.
That would be up to the town to do that, but I don't know.
The answer to that question is, it's been explored by our public safety officials. They do not, because there's no traffic control light there. It would, actually, a crosswalk would make it less safe. More dangerous. It would provide the people walking with the thought that it was safe, because there's a pedestrian walkway, when in fact it's not. It, it's the speed of traffic, it's the fact that you have to cross two lanes of traffic in one direction. So, and, and so cars wouldn't see kids coming from in between the cars. There's very serious concern about that. We are doing everything we can, including trying to redesign with the fire station construction, redesign the intersection with the light to encourage people. What people need to do is walk up to the light, use a pedestrian crosswalk, cross, and then come down to the field. So we're trying to do everything we can to make it clear that people take those extra few steps, go up to the intersection, and then cross.
Thank you. My name is Zaki Macdussi. I live at four three seven East Street, next to the bridge. And we've seen most of those accidents that happened. I have a few questions. Anyway, we can speak, okay. This project looks like you're looking at the replacement of the bridge only. You're not looking at the safety issues and the zone itself around. And what I mean is, really, for us...
And then out of our home, we have to, you know, drive our driveway. We have to always slide very slowly to be able to see the traffic coming. So now, if you make this bridge higher and let it widen the street, the speed will be, be more speed, or the... I think there should be speed bumps considered by the town. They pied lower in the bridge, I mean, the street, about here and a half ago, and they went down maybe two or three inches. We got a lot of dust, but it was good, because there was no more speed. So we were able to get in and out easily. So I think they should consider little speed bumps on both sides. Also, the signage, they spent forty thousand dollars on signage, but it should be one sign the same height of the bridge, so the tracks will hit the sign before they hit the bridge. And that's very important. Even if you make this higher to thirteen point six, you still have tracks hitting the bridge, because people don't pay attention to the signs enough. So maybe, let's say, ten percent don't pay attention, and then they will hit the bridge. So that's very important. The question I have is, when you're making this wider under the bridge, so you're going from nineteen feet, I think, to twenty-four? Twenty-five. Would that affect the sidewalk that goes in front of my house? Would be taking any of the land or the property that, on both sides of the street?
I'll show you the plan. There is going to be modifications to the entry driveways. There will be modifications.
So what?
That, that would be part of this project.
So one of the things that I was asked is, if we can move our driveway to the other side, like the entrance to our home? So we'll be able to see the cars that are, that are coming from the highway and to the, to the...
So right now, you are right here?
Yes. And people are passing through our yard to go to the track, so they can...
Well, then how can they be able to do that anymore? Because this will be, this will be a large pain wall.
Yes.
So there will be no more access to be able to cut through here, to go up, you'll have to go through the trees and brush.
But wouldn't it be taking part of our, our property to make this wider? Would that be reasonable to ask to move our entrance to our home? Or at least the beginning of the driveway to the other side, close up to our neighbor, so we can get in and out easily?
Well, that would be up to the town on whether... So what, if I understand correctly, you're saying relocate your driveway further away from the bridge to allow you to be able to back out?
And there's a picture here of that, shows our driveway.
Right.
And right now, if you, you go in our home...
Yeah.
To get in is not a problem, but to get out, it's always a problem.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's something the towns would have to think about when they want to do it.
The town also, they should put, you know, for pedestrian, for our case, where they pass to the playground, they have to go to Strapper State and wait to be able to pass. There's nothing on the ground, you know, marked, so they can proceed.
So you're saying crossing this way?
Crossing to the, where's the, you know, the fire station now? Next to the fire station, there's like a basketball and a playground.
The Morris Field.
So there's nothing marked on the ground, so they can...
That's what he was addressing before. I wanted to...
Thank you.
Yeah. As far as anything having to do with the driveway, I think we got to talk to the town, and then of course your neighbor, and then there's all sorts of issues with land. But all this, all this area is being, if you want to say, taken or modified, it's all within the right of way.
And I think that with regard to the driveway access and different conditions like that, I don't think we need to address that at a fifteen percent design level. So that's, that's a further consideration and a further design level in future. That we could talk about, and we bring it up, and we look at what...
The reason I ask is because they're removing the old sidewalk on that side of our home, and then...
Right.
Facing a new one. Maybe at the same time, if we can get approval to move our, at least the beginning of our driveway, then we can turn inside.
Yeah, no, no. It sounds like a reasonable thing. All I'm saying is...
But we have our house, so there's a setback, you know, there.
It, it's something that we could talk about on the twenty-five percent design, at the next level. This was planning to get the idea, the concept of how high it would be and how wide it would be.
So typically, in the MDTA design process, the public is invited to look at the plans in thirty percent, because there's a lot more of the questions answered. And then we sort of, at the thirty percent level, which would be the next in the middle, we would come for you, and we would take more of your input, and at that point, we would try to depress it. So at this point, we're fifteen and thirty. We're not at that one yet. So what Mike was saying is absolutely right. That's what we could consider.
Hi, here. My name's Mike Skane. I'm on E Street. I, I don't know if this is a question or a clarification. I heard restriction, height restriction, torque restriction is not being lifted. But then when I hear thirteen-six, now the box trucks can go under, I thought box trucks were restricted from the street. So is that being lifted?
I, I don't know, but box trucks is two and a half tons. I don't think it is. I believe so. So those, so the truck restriction that exists there today is two point five tons. That restrict, I'm...
It's not a height thing, it's a weight.
Not a height thing, it's weight.
So it's just on, it's just...
Trucks of that size are not allowed to go. That's basically your trailer trucks. That restriction will continue to exist in the future. The other restrictions on the height, those height restrictions will be eliminated. So trucks that are following that, which is like your box trucks, which should be following that, will be allowed to go, but they'll be able to go through that, through that bridge now. But the bigger trucks will...
So it's going to be increasing box trucks going up and down the street? Now, he hit another point, the speed. Are you looking at anything to monitor the speed? Because right now, they slow down when they come to the, to the bridges and narrow, as soon as they get here, they gun it. Opening up, it's just going to be faster going. Cars are going to be flying up and down the street.
Again, I think that's a consideration as we go further into the design. We look at what, what kind of, we can introduce that will help with speed modification.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bill Delight, one forty-eight School Street. I was just wondering if we could propose a restriction on commercial vehicles, and dual-wheel vehicles on that road, so they won't have access to going down to the railroad tracks and down to Islington, and then up School Street, by Lane to K Street, whatever it is. I think this will, once you open up that bridge, we're going to have a bunch of trucks coming up that way.
Paul Kelly, one oh seven Woollett Circle. I've seen through the years, a lot of flooding in our area, down through Woollett Circle and whatnot, and on the East Street Bridge, that when there's a deluge or rain, that really floods out down there. It was right by the house that's to the, right next to the bridge.
So we're talking about this area here? On this side?
Right there, right where you are.
The white fence is now, so the white fence is...
On the other side of the road.
Over here.
Yes. A lot of flooding in that area. So how many rain receptacles do you have in the street? So if we have three in that area, and you're going to bring the grade down, we have to calculate how much more water is now needed since the pipe size maybe is not changing. You know, I think it's twelve now, from what I saw. So take into consideration, you know, heavy rains, because all it does is go through the back yards if it's not, if there's not enough drainage on the street. So please have the engineers look at that.
Yeah, I completely agree. Again, the fifteen percent level, we don't even look at that. So when we get to the next level, we start thinking about drainage. There's going to be a hydrology analysis done as far as how much water comes in there during storms, type of storms, whether the sizes of the pipe are, are correct. Right now, I don't know if Jeff or Todd, if they want to talk about there's raining here now in someplace. Is that the only one that's there? I'm not really sure. It's kind of off on the side, set back. Maybe there's, there's fog down.
Now, that stream actually runs down, down all seven of the streets. You have the fog in the river.
Okay.
And the waves and whatnot.
Okay.
But even, even though you mentioned that we have a thirteen percent design, we can let, we work together and see what needs to be done with the yard, so that the bridge itself, clearing, and we will, whatever is active, that might be, 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 as well.
One more question, Paul Kelly here. You were mentioning the bridge is over a hundred years old, and so... So the MDTA was going to do this, no matter how many trucks hit it anyway?
Well, eventually, they, it reaches a point where, so every year, or John, correctly, how many, is it every year we do load ratings? Are they actually inspected?
We've got to force the director of Bridge and Tunnel Projects to do. No, we, we inspect, in-depth inspection. Every four years, we do a more press reinspection. Every year, we do a load rating. Every ten years, we, we have a complete inventory of all our bridges and the status of what they can carry. This bridge exactly, even though it's nineteen eleven, it's in relatively good shape. So if we're not, for the safety issues of vehicles hitting it, we probably would not be replacing the bridge at this time. It wouldn't rise to the priority that it is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Kayla, I'm six thirty-one Beacon Street. So I live in the Islington area. Also, I'm a member of the bike competition safety committee of the town, which is a subcommittee that plays a role. I have a question in regards of the, if there is any interest from the town that the bridge would have at the track level, a sidewalk for like a three feet to four feet sidewalk in order to facilitate the people who work in Westwood, they take behind the Roche Brothers, which is that side of the, it's not shown in the map, but it's behind that, which is behind Roche Brothers. We have quite many employees over there. So I'm not sure, without getting into the air rights of the neighboring, is there enough room to think about that or just to add more function to this bridge rather than just using it for the trains? But we can use it also for commuters who work in Westwood and they can have easy access to their work.
So are you suggesting...
On the other side, actually, on the other side of the track, that is opposite from the Islington Center, yeah? Is there any enough airspace over there to accommodate a sidewalk at the track level? Not on the ring?
Well...
That request should come from the town, probably. I know that, but I'm not sure.
When you say at track level, you're saying you'd be able to walk along the tracks?
Correct, it's a sidewalk.
No, that's...
So that is completely different. So what kind of...
That's a safety concern. We don't want people walking along the tracks.
So is there any, how to say, is it a different type of bridge or a different type of accommodation? Or it cannot be?
I mean, I don't, I don't see a way, a way doing that other than...
It's a different curtain.
There's, there's just... There's just, we cannot have people on the tracks under any circumstances. So there, people aren't allowed to be on the tracks because of getting hit by a train.
Yeah, I'm not mixing the two much as a...
Right.
Definitely a designated task.
Like a, almost like a trail or something?
Yeah, yeah, with all the protection, all the recommendation of the...
I mean, it sounds interesting. The issue would be how to get them from the Roche Brothers side over the tracks to this side.
Oh, no, I'm not thinking about employees of the Roche's. I'm more about behind the Roche's, we have more employees on the other side. Because usually, most of the Roche Brothers employees may be locals. But on the other side, we may have more commuters.
Okay.
Industrial area.
Industrial area, yeah.
Right.
So it's more about creating productivity?
Yeah. It's a, it's a, like, it would be a land issue and what, the town, I mean, who owns the land and what accessibility is out, people, you know, can be given to be able to do with it, like what you're talking about. I don't, I mean, it definitely would be part of this project, but again, it can't be up to track level. It would have to be down.
Okay, isn't it okay?
Like down in the basement, almost like a trail or something. But that's something that would have to be worked out with the landowners in the town and in that area to be able to facilitate something like that.
Hi, Kate Nguyen, Seattle Drive. I'm just curious, what, how many similar projects have you done to this? We've done so much in what appears to be such a short period of time. And how likely is this project, based on that experience, to be successful on time? And if you happen to know it, how does the community feel about it five years out, six years out?
Very good question. John, do you have anything to, as far as how often we've done something like this, where we've taken a bridge that's so far and made it larger and how can you feel about it? And we've done so many.
Yeah, sure. We've done, we've done lots of bridges in the last five years all along the Paramount Carter, for example, at Columbia Road, at Talbot End, Woodrow Ave, in Dorchester, we've done...
So, so sorry, if you could speak to the bridge that's the most like ours?
Those bridges are very similar. They carry commuter rail over many streets. We don't have plain street in Dorchester...
Have trucks hit them? Do trucks hit those bridges?
Plain street in Dorchester, yes. Let's see. That's really, most of the bridges that we replace are replaced due to structural reasons. So this, this is relatively unique in that we're not replacing it for strictly a structural reason. It's more of a safety concern because of the number of collisions. So I can't, I can't point to recent history of, if you're asking like would the neighborhood change or something like that, I can't give you data on that because we generally have a large, larger number of structurally deficient bridges which we're replacing for structural reasons, structural safety reasons as opposed to vehicular collision reasons.
But all the ones that John mentioned, Talbot Ave and all those, those are fairly recent and they've all been on time, pretty much on time.
We've been doing a very good job on time, on budget with the, in general, is the bridge projects as compared to other MBTA projects are very much more close to time and budget. And we have a lot of experience with doing accelerated bridge construction. So if you guys, ten bridge contracts under construction right now, if you can come up with...
An accelerated bridge is fairly new in that it cuts down the construction time and destruction of the neighborhood. So that's, so far, they've all been successful. Like I said, if you want to see one, it could be around one of the projects. They have the Guile Street Bridge in Norwood, which is right behind the post office. Everyone knows it. It's a, that bridge is not, is structurally deficient and will be replaced. It will not get any larger. An identical bridge will go back to its, to replace it. Reasons why is because the station is right there, the platform practically touches the bridge. If we were to raise that bridge and make it any larger, it would affect Norwood Central Train Station, multimillion dollar project, surrounding area would be affected. We simply don't have the budget for it. So the easiest way is to go in and replace the bridge. The bridge won't look as wide. There are four tracks there now, only two tracks are being replaced. So it will make it brighter, it will be bigger and scarier. So that's happening. Starting up soon, through the summer into fall, maybe the actual bridge replacement between fall or early spring.
Michael Kraft, Coach Lane, and also Lekeela on the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Committee. Two questions for you. First, to what extent does the reconstruction also involve taking into consideration signage to ensure that proper height vehicles go through and others don't go through? And possibly some kind of electronic strong warnings and that sort of thing? The second, from a pedestrian point of view, is I've seen in many situations where there are sidewalks under bridges, that there is a barrier created, like a Jersey barrier, to protect the sidewalk from the traffic. And I don't know if that's appropriate in this situation, if it should be considered, et cetera.
So the first question, is that new signage for the new bridge? Or, so I expect that the signs that's there now will just be updated to reflect the thirteen-foot-six warning of this thirteen-foot-six inch bridge. I don't see any additional signage, but it could be a possibility depending on where we go in the project and we move forward. We can certainly take that into consideration and work with the town on that. The other question was barriers. We, we're not considering putting in barriers. I don't know, you know, what that will look like as you're sort of, you know, are we going to run barriers like from here to here? Is that something the town really wants visually what it will look like? We don't normally do that. Maybe something would be considered, but at this point, there's no, we're not anticipating there are any barriers to, to shelter pedestrians anymore than they would be sheltered now with the six-foot sidewalk. Yeah, six-foot sidewalk. So right now, like I said, two eleven-foot lanes, two five-foot shoulders that can be used for bicycles, and then the sidewalks. A bit more room on the north side, you know, the buildings all loosed up. We were thinking bike lanes at some point, but there's nothing really to connect bike lanes to. We'll start them there, then it'll just be a process of trying to corral bikes. I think it would be a wonderful idea and a way to go.
We'll have to do it for bike lanes.
Right, exactly.
Put them in.
Well, you can put them in and then there'll be no, there's no end to that.
You think the bikes stop?
No, what I'm saying is people will be looking for continuation of bike trail and bike review.
Sure. Joe Perretiere, sixteen Dean Street. I just want to, off the Paul Kelly's question. Paul, your concern about Woollett Circle is, I agree with your concerns. The issue is the box culvert downstream from Southbrook. And, and I think Todd and his crew have done a great job on Southbrook cleaning that up. And I think you just need to keep in mind that the Foster Brothers' property is also coming up, which will allow us greater opportunities to address the concerns for flooding in the Woollett Street neighborhood. So thanks.
So Joe, is that on the side of the...
That's correct. It's downstream.
Thank you.
I'll meet you halfway. Lisa Shafiro at Land Drive. My question is, you said that there's funding allocated and what is going on? And does the town have to pay anything for completion of the project?
There is funding allocated. I know, I don't know the exact number.
John? Yeah. The design is completely funded in one, under one grant. We get a lot of our money, the federal grant from the FDA. And they gave us, the number fluctuates a little bit from month to month, but they gave us roughly eighty-five million dollars that I can use for bridge construction. So East Street is, right now, on my number one within that eighty-five million dollars. And I put twelve million dollars toward East Street and the current estimate is...
Is that design or construction?
That's just construction. But those are just, that's kind of a placeholder, so.
And the other thing is, it's completely funded by the state or the federal government. The town won't put this state to fund it.
Right. Through the MBTA, MBTA will pay for everything.
Is that it?
Debbie Gallagher, twenty-five Ashby. I don't really have a question, but I've been in this town my whole life. And we live near the bridge and we've seen and heard a lot of accidents. And I'm kind of afraid that no matter how many bridges you've built, that you will not be able to build a bridge like ours that will withstand trucks hitting that bridge. And it's not the bridges, Paul, or the accidents. It's the people that do not go the speed limit, do not look at all the signs that we've paid for. And we've watched the cars hit the curb. They're speeding, they're on their cell phone, they're not paying attention. So I know you can't guarantee it, but I hope you can build a bridge that will stand a hundred years because that bridge, like you said, is perfect. And the one at Guile Street, they're only putting up the bridge, the tracks. They're not doing what supports that.
So the one at Guile Street, the existing abutments will remain, but they have to be strengthened.
Right, but they're not doing anything else. So I work in that area.
Yeah. So the abutments will be strengthened. Tie backs will be drilled into the abutments. Concrete casing will be put to support all these new tie backs to be able to support it.
But when I was younger and we brought up our kids, we could walk under that path, under the bridge with carriages and not worry about anyone hitting the bridge. And my oldest is forty, so since he, and the youngest is thirty. So since then, it's gotten worse and it's because of the drivers, not because of the bridge. So I'd rather, I don't, I'd rather the bridge stay the same. And maybe the police should control and I can't imagine a criminal sign up. I mean, we would, we would know from our house that somebody hit the bridge because we're off of East Street and we can, the traffic changes instantly on our street. So that's my opinion.
I'm Christina Solis, I'm on East Street. Is there any way to do this, to widen it, but don't raise it? And then just make the road not for commercial vehicles? So that eliminates giant trucks hitting the bridge. It gives us room, we can walk under the bridge and go to the stores, but you don't have... I've seen trucks that carry cars have to come down and swing around the Woollett Circle.
I'll be on that truck.
Exactly. So if there's any way that we can not raise it, walk under it and just make it no commercial vehicles on East Street, it solves a big problem.
That's a good idea.
I mean, it would be up to, up to the town if that's something they just wanted to do. So you're basically saying widen the bridge, but leave it at the same height and just mandate that no commercial vehicles?
That's it.
You know, I don't know how, I don't know. How would the police, how would it be?
Same way it's going to be policed after you raise it, right? Same thing's going to happen. You're not going to have cars bouncing off curves because it's going to be wider, which seems to be half of the accidents too. You're not going to stop people from not paying attention. That's just the way of the world now, so. But if you, you know, no commercial vehicles, maybe at least, but the bridge is still going to be there.
I have the feeling if you put up a sign that says no commercial vehicles, it's still going to get...
I want the sign to say, hey, stupid, right when we get off. That's not working. Go out of the way.
He's had some people...
Submit signs that say exactly that.
Yes.
I've had emails from around the world suggesting, and I reply to them. Okay?
Have we exhausted? We'll be back for a thirty percent design plan when that's completed. And it sounds like the MBTA is on a fairly aggressive schedule here. So some, would you predict at the end of the summer or early fall?
Thirty percent? Yeah, I would have to say late, early summer.
Would you like to have a public meeting after the summer time? A lot of people are engaged. So why have the public meeting in September, so after, after school and get into their...
Yeah, we'll put, we'll put everything online. We'll create an East Street Bridge area on our website. The presentation was made tonight. Any, any new updates, we'll put them on. And I think in early September, the MBTA will be holding a public hearing.
One other question, Paul Kelly, one oh-seven Woollett Circle. I do see the chief of the fire department, just as long as he's happy, I think we'll all be happy. If his equipment can get under the bridge, that would be great.
John Rogers, Wentworth Street. One of the thoughts that comes to my mind is that looking at the cross section of this new bridge, it's going to be quite a bit more open. So you're going to have much better sightlines. So going to a bunch of people's concerns, it will tend to speed up traffic, right? And you're going to have much better sightlines so the person who's driving right there, they may be coming along faster, you get to see them sooner, you know, further away. So there's sort of a, you know, good, bad. And it does seem like it's an opportunity to address that issue, traffic calming. I realize speed bumps are not something that's in the cards, but there are other calming techniques. There are other things that can be done to slow traffic down. And not that it's a guarantee, crazy drivers are going to be crazy drivers. People are going to do some really, really stupid things. People are going to do some really, really stupid things out there. But you can reduce it, and I don't think those are going to be incorporated within the limits of the bridge itself. Just as the signs warning that there's low clearance can't be right there, they need to be some distance. So, I guess I would just ask that the town consider, along with the T, in coordination with the bridge redesign, consider what traffic calming might be possible, what might be necessary and appropriate for driveways that are right there that could benefit from safety improvements by being relocated. It may be the separation between sidewalks and the travel lanes, whether it's a bike lane. Anyway, I'd ask that all of those things be put into consideration, too, in concert with this, because it sounds like it's going to go very fast once the design plans start coming together.
All right, thank you very much. We are going to continue without board of selectmen here. Moving along now, next on our agenda, we have a lifetime request, a request from Lifetime Fitness for on-premises wine and malt beverage license. Yes, what we'll do is we'll have our presenters come up. And anyone who would like to leave at this time or doesn't want to hang around for the rest of the evening, please feel free to leave without, I'll just shut everyone down. All right, ladies and gentlemen, please, we see that this town would like to continue without meeting this evening. I don't want to have to yell at the chief, I will if I need to.
You won't be the first, you won't be the last.
I mean, of course, the police department, not the fire department. All right, so moving along, we have a request from Lifetime Fitness. Janice? You can sit next to Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Janice Fabio, Tower Westwood, licensing going here. I'm here tonight to give you a brief presentation. Lifetime Fitness has submitted an application for wine and malt beverages on-premise license for the bistro, which is located outside at the pool. The alcohol review committee did meet last week and unanimously voted to not recommend that the license be considered by the board of selectmen.
Would you care to explain why you voted that way?
There are a number of reasons. At this point, I'd like to pass the microphone to Nora Lochne, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Is anyone here from Lifetime Fitness?
Karen, Special counsel Karen Smay, I was here to.
Yes, I do see Karen, yes.
Nora Lochne, Director of Community and Economic Development. We, the alcohol review committee met and we reviewed the application and we considered a few factors. Our primary or initial reason that we were concerned had to do with the design of the facility. Right now, there are two eating establishments at Lifetime Fitness. One inside the Lifetime Cafe and one outside the Lifetime Bistro. That's around the pool area. And the bistro has tables right up against the structure where you go up the counter service and receive your food. But there are also pool deck chairs and tables all throughout the facility, and there is no separate area. Westwood has a very limited number of alcohol licenses. All of them have been issued, pouring licenses have all been issued to restaurants where the primary service is food and alcohol is supplemental to that. And in areas where we have any outdoor service of alcohol, it's segregated, defined, and gated off. So, the alcohol review committee was especially concerned that in this case, especially with counter service, a person who is at the pool could go up to the counter, get their alcoholic beverages, and bring them back to their lounge chair, where they may be set aside on a table while that person's swimming and there's just no control over who has access to that alcohol. Also, due to the size of the deck and the way that the area is staffed, there is, we don't envision that you could well control the or monitor the people who have alcohol in the deck. In addition to that, we were concerned about the ability of the organization to successfully handle an alcohol license. We have some concerns about the ongoing operation of the facility and we're concerned that this is an unnecessary complication. We discussed the fact that we had spoken to the manager of the overall facility some time ago. He actually is no longer there. He's with, he's still with Lifetime, but he hasn't been in Westwood since December. They've been operating without a manager. But we had spoken to them that are concerned that they should apply for a single CV license and if they want alcohol, a single alcohol license for the entire facility that would allow service throughout the facility. They chose to have two separate CV licenses, one for the cafe and one for the bistro, and no overall license for the whole facility. Yet there are often events where food is served, unlicensed food is served elsewhere in the facility, not just in those two restaurants. And it's also been brought to attention that alcohol has been served in an unlicensed manner.
All ready?
Yes. Not by the bistro, not by the cafe, but by events within the block. Now, if the facility as a whole had applied for a license and the board of selectmen saw reason to grant a license, that would be one thing, but there's no license there now. There have been events.
So, they could have applied, let me get this straightly online. They could have applied for a one-day special license, serve alcohol, like everybody else does in town. Like, is there any others that does, like several other people who have a special event? And they just didn't do this. What are you telling us?
Correct. In addition, we have, we worked closely with Lifetime when they were designing the facility. And different representatives of the town, on many occasions, made suggestions for ways that things could be done differently than they were being proposed. Now, Lifetime operates many facilities throughout the country and they have their standard procedures and they appear to work well in most of their jurisdictions. This was their first facility in Massachusetts. And Massachusetts rules differ from others around the country and I think Westwood's different, perhaps from other towns in Massachusetts. So, we attempted to provide clear guidance on our local and state rules and regulations. And it was not always met in the manner that it was offered. It was offered as assistance and it seemed, we often received the response that this is how we do it at Lifetime. So, we have some concerns. We would like to continue to work with Lifetime, to improve the dialogue, and hopefully get to a point where we could be more comfortable with expanded services there. But at this point in time, we don't feel that way. We have concerns about life safety factors at Lifetime. There have been events where our public safety facilities, public safety services have come to the facility and have not found things going the way they would have liked to see them go. I know there was a recent Marine League and our fire department is concerned about how that was handled. Our health department has been concerned about issues regarding sanitation, staffing of lifeguards. We've had concerns that the daycare facility has not been operated to Westwood's standards. So, we have several issues that we feel there are still bugs to be worked out. We think Lifetime Fitness can be a great facility, a great addition to the community, but we think it needs to do some more work to get to that point. And we think that the management, we need an onsite manager who's overseeing everything, making sure the protocols are actually being carried out. And we'd like to work with them to get to that point before considering having anything of this nature that might be an unnecessary complication.
Would anyone from Lifetime Fitness care to say anything?
Hi, good evening. I'm sorry, I have a bit of a cold. My name is Donna Truex. I represent LTF, Flood Operations Company. And I'm accompanied with Peter Elnoff, who is the manager of the facility and which is named Lifetime Athletics. Lifetime, I'm surprised by the denial and some of the information that was provided this evening. I believe Peter would like to address some of those.
Some of the concerns that you brought up, I can't really speak to because it's facility as well. But we discussed with, I believe, Janice about putting up a fence around the bistro to limit any type of alcohol leaving the bistro area. As far as events, since I've been with the company, we haven't had any alcoholic events. We've had mocktails, which is a non-alcoholic beverage, which is actually in our Lifetime magazines that we advertise. And I can't really speak to the Kids Academy or any of the other departments, but we do have an onsite manager. We actually have nine of them. Each department has a manager. And then we also have a general manager, Ryan Brister, and now Benjamin has also stepped in as well. So, yeah, I was kind of taken back by the denial when you were willing to put a fence around the perimeter, limiting people from leaving the area.
I would like to lay out and explain the.
Sorry. Our idea was.
If you will, just let me make a point of clarification. And no denial again, because that's our decision.
Yeah.
There's been a recommendation from our board of selectmen.
So, what we wanted to do, one of the ideas we had discussed with Janice was to put up a fence around, because she said that would have been something that would have been brought up to try to control any type of alcohol going to the seats. We also wanted to stop from having any poolside service. So, instead of having servers go and get orders, we decided just to limit it to the bistro this year to try to control the flow. Also, the whole outdoor bistro is encaged by a fence and emergency alarms that go off if anybody tries to sit down. The bistro itself would be staffed, not only with busters that would go around to pick up any debris, but nine total would be working out there, six of which would be on the outside. So, staffing wise, we would definitely meet our specs. But putting a fence is something that we will, we would definitely consider. As far as how the licensing was before we opened up, that's something I can't speak to because I don't know exactly what type of licenses they brought on or what they could have.
I have a question. I had a discussion with you at Lifetime last time and I agree with everything you said. I mentioned that that probably would be the way that the alcohol review committee would be more inclined to consider approval, to affirmative to the selectmen. Most of my contact for the alcohol license has been with corporate counsel, Adam Lukey. I am, he, we discussed the preference to have the alcohol segregated. And he was not in favor of that. And the plans do not show any fencing that he submitted in the application around the bistro area and the tables.
Would that be something considered if we did put a fence? Now, that was something we had discussed. I wasn't aware that that wasn't something that, Adam, when I discussed with Adam, he said he did put a fence if that's what the city wants.
I received a letter from Adam to the alcohol review committee that said there was a fence existing now. I did confirm with several staff members, there is no fence existing at the site now. And so.
I think he was speaking to the outside perimeter fence with the emergency exits.
I can show you something.
Well, Janice, it's when I have the April 1st letter that she's referring to. It specifically says alcohol beverages may only be purchased from the Lifetime Cafe, outdoor poolside bistro serving counter. The poolside bistro seating and serving area is fenced and separated from the main pool deck area. Alcohol beverages are not sold anywhere else in the Lifetime Fitness property. So, Janice brought to the gentleman's attention that that is not the case. The fence is not fenced and separated from the pool and asked if he would like to amend the plans to show that. And he said he would not, that he could proceed with the application as is. As far as the question of manager, my comment went to general manager, which I know over the last month and a half, we've been told there is no general manager onsite. I know Michael DiLio had been there. He left. I think Ryan stepped in as acting manager for some time and I'm told he's no longer there.
No, Ryan Brister has now moved up here and has been with us since Michael asked me to move up.
And is he the, is he the general manager of the facility? Because when I call over there, I'm told that he is not and that there is no general manager and that I should contact a gentleman in Atlanta. And in fact, on the website, there's a notation on the website that mentions problems they've also been having with break-ins to cars at the, in the parking lot there. And it mentions that you contact the manager and he gives an email address and a name and it takes you to Atlanta, Georgia. So, I think we've had many phone calls that have gone unanswered and we just have concerns about the level of communication with the locality and unapparent, not taking our local rules seriously and we're concerned about that.
All right, well, clearly we have some disagreement between the parties, at least as representations made and representations received. So, we have before us the end of license. Would either of you want to make a motion at this point in time?
I have a question.
Okay, if you'd like to ask questions.
So, could you please explain the discrepancy that we're seeing between what you're representing and what our staff are representing?
So, from what I'm understanding is they want something that controls the alcohol in the bistro.
That's been clear, I think, since day one with your conversations with us. But you've got, it appears you have letters from corporate counsel saying you have a fence, there's no fence. You're admitting there's no fence. This is very troubling to me, okay? I've been on the board for 18 years. We've been serving alcohol for how long? For about eight, eight or nine years. I have never seen the ARC come to us with a unanimous recommendation not to issue a license. It's just outstanding to me. I'm shocked by it. So, my question to you is, if you had a preference, would you rather have us deny the license today or would you like us to continue with the see if you can clean your management act up to the point where we feel good about issuing the license?
I appreciate your comments and we would prefer that you would continue the hearing so that we could address these issues and submit amendment to the application. Clearly, there was no local counsel at the time the application was submitted. We have just been retained a couple of weeks ago. I was provided the application. I was not provided any communication. And I certainly have just met Janice this evening and have not had any communication with the committee at all. So, I think at this point, we should step back and see if we can straighten things out and amend the application and do things appropriately.
Okay, counsel. Okay. Counsel, is that the right move for us, to just continue the hearing?
Well, I think that the board needs to determine this application issue is one issue that's at play here, and that there's some discrepancies clearly. I think that the ARC recommendations were based on a number of factors that the board can either consider today or add a continued hearing, which go to the valid factors, including the appropriateness of a license at this type of operation at this location, some of the public safety questions that came up, character and fitness of the applicant, which goes to the management questions that came up. So the board, all I'll say, well, if the application was perfect, the question is, if the application was perfect, would all of these other factors weigh differently with the board? And if the board's not ready to answer those questions today because there are too many things outstanding, certainly we can continue the hearing. I think that continuance needs to be for a short period of time. I would recommend that within...
Oh, sure.
Well, within 30 days.
I have a short period of time on the board.
Within, certainly within 30 days, I think the continuance on this application can be granted, if any longer than that in terms of the...
And if they're not ready in 30 days, and we were not still happy with it, we could move to deny it without prejudice to allow them to come back?
If you schedule it for the public hearing today, you would still at that public hearing open the hearing up, and the applicant would either withdraw at that point, or you could deny it based on the fact that they are not prepared to proceed at that time.
Okay.
Deny it without prejudice, so that they could...
In spite of that, I still have some questions. I can't really see that well. Can you point to where the pool is? Do that again.
Also, the line right here is the lap pool.
So that upper black line and that goes by the bistro was not pool?
I'm sorry, this?
Yeah.
So this is pool?
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. I didn't know it was going to be that difficult. Try it again. It is? Okay. What's the distance between the pool and where you'd be serving alcohol? Measurement? Okay. That's important, and any design, we'd want to see in complete detail beforehand. I will tell you, I don't like this idea. You could clean up this a lot. I don't like it. I don't think this is the right place for us to be having alcohol served, but I'm happy to give you a chance to convince us. But I am hugely troubled by how our staff has been treated by your organization over the past several months, and the lack of responsiveness to these people. It is beyond anything we've expected from any business that's come in to University Station. So I don't care if you have 20 managers, if there isn't one head guiding all those managers, this is as sloppy as anything I've ever seen. So you have more to do than resolving an application before we're going to, I would ever consider this favorably.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we continue this hearing for not more than 30 days.
I'll second that.
Say aye. Aye. Yes. We will set it at our next meeting, which is April 25th at 7:30. It's the time the meeting will start, the time we post the public hearing. All right, we'll post it for 7:30. Continue hearing until April 25th at 7:30. Location will be at the Board of Selectmen Meeting Room in town.
Just so you understand, it's posted to 7:30, because that's when the Board of Selectmen meeting starts. But it may be 8:30, but we get to that issue if there are other issues that come as well. By tonight.
Okay, moving along, we have a continued public hearing for Not Your Average Joes. They propose amendments to the rules and regulations governing alcoholic beverages. So Janice, parents, they're going to be around. So Janice, do you want to take the microphone back again?
So the last time the Board of Selectmen met, they were asked to consider changing the beverage size for... Particularly, we received the inquiry from Not Your Average Joes to increase the beverage size more than 16 ounces. The last time we met, the selectmen were unsure. We were unsure that you were not all in agreement that we should change the ounces from 16 to 20 ounces. Following that, the Alcohol Review Committee met again, and several members decided that we'd ask you to consider leaving the capacity of the serving at 16 ounces and adding the language "except as expressly permitted by the Board of Selectmen." We did invite Michael Belli, the proposed manager of record for Not Your Average Joes, to answer any questions of the Board of Selectmen about how this is a pro for their business and why they're seeking to serve.
So I see Michael in the back. Mr. Dotty, would the gentleman like to be able...
Sure. Hi, everybody. How are you doing? So basically, just about having guest preferences. Our menu has 20-ounce draft beers company-wide. So it's really just about giving our guests the option. We had a good record with serving, but really what it comes down to is myself and my staff being responsible with alcohol, food, allergies, everything that we do. It's all about responsible serving. So, I mean, you could look at me for that, the general manager. And my staff is all trained, and they're all serve-safe, alcohol-certified. So that's what I would tell you is, with alcohol, it's all about, you know, being responsible. That would be whatever I have to say, rather than anything.
Just a second. It's all about guest preference. And we have served for 22 years in the state of Massachusetts without issue. It's really been more of staff being trained properly. In a service situation, nobody wins, and so we don't want to see that either. So it really is less about the package size and much more about properly trained staff and being responsible.
Mr. Hearn?
So explain to us what oversized drinks you're proposing to serve.
Throughout the company, we have 14-ounce and 20-ounce draft beers. So we would be proposing, you know, to be able to have a standard venue across the company.
It's only beer? Last time in front of us, I thought there was a large sangria too.
The pitcher for sangria, yes, which is essentially two and a half glasses, right?
Okay.
Janice, at our last meeting, my question was if the chief of police had been at the Alcohol Review Committee, and he had not been at that one. So I know he's here, and I know he can speak for himself, but was he at the subsequent meeting?
He was home, yes, he was. And I was definitely present.
Which I expect him to. So Chief, could you comment? Because I think that was one of the questions I had, was your views on this request before proceeding?
Sure, thank you. So before I answer, I just wanted to publicly thank the board for asking for commentary from the police department on that consistently. You're always very supportive of public safety in the town, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. If I could clarify, I was speaking by phone in the last meeting because I was at a training class. So unless anybody thinks I was on the beach with my freedom, that's what I did for discipline. Look at this tan. No question, I wasn't on the beach. So as it relates to this request, we have no concern. And I certainly have no concern at the police department because I agree it's all about training of the server site. Anecdotally, I remember when they opened the first Not Your Average Joes. And so I've had the opportunity to observe their business operation just as a customer. And certainly, I bring that with me experientially in other capacities. In New Bedford, for example, we went to all the boring and non-boring establishments. We did alcohol stings. We started to do some checks here in Westwood for all the restaurants and people in town to know that's something we monitor. I've never heard with any of the alcohol classes, any of the trainings with any law enforcement officials, of Not Your Average Joes being anything but responsible. Whether someone has one 20-ounce drink, or three 8-ounce drinks, or any combination of third-grade math, it's clearly all about server training. And so it makes no difference for us at the police department what size they serve. I think it's a decision for the board to make. And in your wisdom, you think that's something you want to do. But in terms of public safety, we have no concerns about that. As long as they're trained, as long as they're responsible, somebody is either going to be overserved or they're not, notwithstanding the size of the glass of the container that's in.
So Janice, back to this, Section 3 that is in our meeting material would stand as is, and we would be making an exception to this restaurant? And any future restaurants would have to come in and similarly state their cases? Is that what we're proceeding?
You would ask language to the end of Section 3. After this, except as expressly permitted by the Board of Selectmen.
So we amend that section and then take up this request for Not Your Average Joes?
I just want to say, I think it's a great compromise. And I would like to say, so far, Not Your Average Joes has been a great community piece. So, Mr. Hearn or Mrs. Hatt, would you like to make a motion at this time?
I'll move first that we amend Section 3, special additional rules for Section 12 licenses, to end with the following, except expressly permitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
So then I move that we, in consideration of the request by Not Your Average Joes, approve allowing up to 20-ounce containers in their rules and regulations. If I'm reading this correctly, is that the right motion?
If you want to put a condition on their licenses that permits them, on the condition section, that expressly permits them to serve 20-ounce containers. And if you want to be specific that it is to beer and or sangria, we could put that in.
So I move that we add a condition to their permit allowing service of up to 20-ounce containers for beer and sangria beverages. As for amendment?
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much, Janice. Thank you. Okay, so moving along, we have new business to attend to. We have amendments to taxi rules and regulations. So the Board of Selectmen have been asked to amend the taxi rules and regulations by clarification on various sections, including but not limited to consistency with the town bylaws and the authority to revoke taxi licenses. So it was presented in our package. Since 2014, I've been asked to approve rules and regulations governing applications and the issuance of taxi companies within the town of Westwood. They are now seeking to make some changes to the regulations as proposed. Is that you, Nora, that would like to... You heard that Christine? Mike, on the taxi regulations?
So there are a number of changes that we've determined should be made based on experience, which we've been enforcing these. The first one would be to eliminate the reference to mass registry of motor vehicles as being a requirement, because the police department, the police chief can check the ability of any driver's license in any state. And sometimes we have folks that want to come and provide service here. They have not yet gotten approval for here, and so they want to keep their license in the state they're currently operating in. The next one is that we want to make it consistent the difference between taxi vehicles and a public automobile or limousine. The next one is that we want to change the language to allow the police chief to suspend or revoke a driver's acting license, which you can currently, but that he be limited to only suspending a taxi company license. It's our experience or our belief that he could recommend a revocation of it, even pull it for a period of time. But it should actually be the Board of Selectmen that would revoke the license after a hearing. Next is to provide an appeal of a suspension or revocation process that would be made for a driver's acting license that would be made before the town administrator. The next one is to add violations and penalties as an appendix to the rules and regulations. And finally, cross-referencing the town's bylaw to be consistent with the rules and regulations that we've established.
So I have a question. Do we provide, Christine, do we provide a book to anyone who comes in to apply for taxi license about our regulations?
Do we provide them with a copy of the regulations, or also online? I also do a part-time work. Do we, where's the interview though? Do we talk them through about those matters?
And so when we make these changes, how do the changes get to the taxi drivers or the owner of the acting license, do we know? Chief?
So we can push out a letter. I mean, some of the changes are less significant than others. Obviously, right of appeal is significant. You know, we just push that out to the service of carers who are impacting officer, licensing officer with the police department. We notify them that way.
And the suspension can be no more than 30 days in that area.
So, yes, although typically the only suspensions that we've had up until now have been those that are licenses that we're looking to revoke. Because we would typically address any of the violations just with a warning or a bylaw penalty maybe. So if somebody gets suspended, for the most part, they're on their way to a recommendation for revocation, have one of those out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a question for Mike. Mike, I think you've put a cart before the horse here. While I understand the need for an appeal or a revocation, I think having the town administrator review the acts of the Board of Selectmen is not a good idea for a town administrator, with all due respect. So that's not something I can support.
The appeal would be only for the suspension or revocation of the driver's acting license. The company's license offering would be the Board of Selectmen. And I gotta believe that it's the courts.
The appeal, the town will need appeal to District Court if we revoke the acting license? Okay, either way, they've got a right to go to court. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I will not sit and judge a little bit, the Board of Selectmen actually. I am not going down that road.
I was thinking the same thing. Okay. So one of the second bullet that you mentioned, making consistent the difference between taxi vehicle and a public automobile or limousine, is that to say you're eliminating the difference? This point is really hard to follow, and I was trying to find where...
Christine can answer this one better than I can.
So the difference actually between a public automobile and a taxi vehicle is basically deliberate. So someone who is hired to do a specific... So someone who is hired to do a specific group is a livery versus a taxi can be, they can pick up people wherever they want, they make taxi plate registrations. Librarians need livery plate registrations with more vehicle, with a DMV. So there is a difference between the two. Public automobiles is basically a livery, limousine type of, currently do not have any registered in town.
But what's the point here? What are we changing?
Just to make sure that they understand that they can't do both. They can't have the group plates under their taxi company license, and that they can't have taxi company under the livery.
And where in the rules and regs does that get covered?
I think it's a section, I don't have this rule in mind, but there's a section that says public automobile, and then actually on the other side, we have the traffic laws and orders, which will be brought in at a later time, we'll make events to those to make the policy consistent, because those are, those are out of date as well.
So do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the changes to the taxi rules and regulations.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay. And, yes, you can, of course you can, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you. I'm afraid I'll go with this door, but I will. What do we do about Uber and those kind of services?
That's actually a question, how would you like the town administrators, I mean, they're, of course, be trying to.
To be decided, thank you.
Figure it out. Nobody's expecting an answer.
Okay, so we also have the snow and ice account next, to see if the Board of Selectmen authorize the DPW, staying around Todd, thank you, to deficit spend up to a specific amount of future snowstorms, not that we're going to have any more, we said this last time, didn't we, in our last meeting? And Mr. Hearn was guilty for that one, so.
I said no.
Yeah, after he said it. So are we looking to deficit spend for the snow and ice account up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Additional money?
Additional money.
We're currently operating at seven, six thousand dollars, that's a severe hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This time of year should cover some of these bills that come from the past storm, and hopefully nothing would, nothing else in the future, but itself, we can hopefully handle it and help without contractors.
Will approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, Todd. So next on our agenda, on our whole business, we have to adopt domestic violence abuse leave policy for the town. As presented in our packets, it will give employees up to fifteen days leave from work in any twelve-month period. It is enrolling twelve months, so it will be from when the employee requests it at the time. It is for victims of domestic abuse, however that might occur, and asking the town to adopt that policy effective April fourth, two thousand and sixteen, and to be included in the town and Westwood personnel policies. Questions?
This was verified by the personnel board?
Yes.
And you mean for all modified and written off?
Yes, it's a great thing, so.
I will approve it, Mr. Trump.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Next, order of business is to review and sign the annual town meeting warrant. But before we sign it, we have to remove our miscellaneous, our final miscellaneous article, which apparently we do not need. Town meeting will be, of course, Monday, May second. We've been asked to review and sign the town meeting warrant. It is to be posted no later than April twenty-fifth, seven days prior to the annual town meeting. Warrant will be posted in all four precincts throughout the town in order for registered voters to review it.
Mr. Trump, I move, I move that you approve the final miscellaneous article.
A second then?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Do we need a motion to sign? My duty, a motion to be signed?
I move that we sign the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Is this the final order of the articles that still appear?
It is the way, the way from the Mormon.
The way from the Mormon, not on that.
Not on that list.
They got that with your warrant.
Moving along, we have approval of the regular minutes.
Will approval March twenty-eighth, the minutes are ready?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Do we have any questions from the public or press? Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Hi, Paul Kelly, one oh seven Wall Street Circle. I have gone to the Selectmen's office, and Mr. Bill has gotten back to me, along with the Chief of Police and Sergeant Scott, about the no right student heading on Washington Street, northbound to take down the sign, right on red. Because of the impact that the construction, if it's temporary or whatever it be, I will, and everyone thought it was a great idea. As far as I know, the sign is still up there.
So this is in front of?
The reason for it is because people are walking, the sidewalk is closed, and there's a big fence out there. So the drivers that proceed to that after they stop and take a right on red, there's people there at the crosswalk, and they're crossing, not knowing, because they can't see because of the fence. So my proposal was to remove the sign permanently or temporarily, and I believe the sign is still there.
This is in front of the new fire station?
Yes, sir.
Technically, it's in front of the community center, right, Paul, as you open across?
Well, sir, it's in front of the fire station. Crossing Arlington Pizza at that stoplight, crossing the post office, even closer.
We understand Mr. Kelly's concern, and it's primarily, there's an ongoing concern that's been back, we've been back and forth on it, but the particular concern at this moment is that you can't see a pedestrian in that crosswalk because of the fencing and other things that are there. And so the feeling of pause occurred to the public safety officer, it would be a good time, because it's more unsafe to remove the sign and see how it works. And if, you know, at least in this instance, you need to put it back at some future point, and it doesn't work on the total traffic, then we will, but at least for now, we should remove it.
I personally have almost seen people with baby carriages get hit, because they come around the corner so fast.
I understand.
Thank you.
What does the sign say?
The sign says that you can take a right on red.
So shouldn't we replace it with a sign that says you don't like on red?
Correct, that was going to be my question.
It does say yield pedestrians, but doesn't it?
Yeah, but you can't see it.
Yes, so we should have a sign that says you don't like on red, especially to change behavior, because people will think.
So is Todd still here?
No.
Okay. Yeah. So I don't think you need a motion from us on this. I think you need a directive that the right turn on red sign should come down and be replaced by no right turn on red for the time being until the construction's done. And if we need to make other additional safety steps to protect that corner during the process of construction, let's keep an eye on that.
Is there a timeframe? Would there be a timeframe? Not the sound politics, I don't want to hear any of that. Is it going to take two weeks to take it down?
It's tomorrow, good enough.
Can't do it tonight.
Start out right now, we probably can't see the screws to get it down.
Wonderful.
Okay?
Thank you, everybody.
And we have a feeling you'll let us know if it didn't happen.
Paul, call me if it's not done. Thank you, Paul.
All right, any other questions from the public or press? Yes, sir. Let it down, face off to the right, please.
Jim, July, from Gay Street. There's a lot of conversation about the East Street Bridge and post signage. This morning, there was an accident on the corner of Gay Street and Pine Lane involving a school bus. I, I'll give you a little history. My wife and I were PTO presidents at the Hanlon School a long time ago. My kids are in their mid-forties now. Back then, we petitioned this committee in the town meeting to put some kind of sign that there's a school here. Heads came up with blinking school signs. Those signs really don't work, and in fact, I don't think any of the speed limit work on Gay Street. We've seen cement trucks bombing fifty miles an hour, kids are playing on the playground. It's really dangerous. I come, the traffic leaving Westwood Center heading toward Washington Street, about eighty percent of that traffic heads toward Pine Lane. So a person who's on Pine Lane, ready to pull out on Gay Street, doesn't know whether the tower's going to go down Pine Lane or go straight. I think that might have been the cause of that accident this morning, maybe a school bus with kids on it. I nearly got killed many times, you know? Cars in front of me take the right to go to Pine Lane, I'm going straight to my house, the car pulls up in front of me, I screech on my brake. Back then, when I petitioned the town, I was hoping that there would be a light, you push the button, a light would stop the traffic. Considering that we have a sidewalk on one side of the street, when you reach Pine Lane, that sidewalk is now on the Hanlon School side of the street, people have to cross the street sometimes without a crossing guard if they're using the sidewalk. So I would like for the board to consider, you know, some more traffic abatement at that intersection. Also, signs that somehow monitor the speed, so that if you're going over the speed limit, it'll blink and tell you you're going too fast, especially if that's school. There are two signs that says school zone, slow down. One of them is green and red, you can't read it. That's the one that's on my house. Another one further down by Washington Street, they're not standard signs, school zone. They're different colors, little kids playing, and the print is only this big that says slow down. Those signs are very ineffective. So anyways, I think we need to do something about, not only just Gay Street, but obviously any of the artery streets that lead into Westwood, you know, East Street, certainly one oh nine. One oh nine has enough lights, and I think that's okay. But make a long story short, we're seeing a lot of traffic, more traffic than thirty years ago, and my kids are in that school, and much faster traffic, and we just need some kind of signage and some kind of traffic abatement that reminds drivers that just going too fast, and there's a school here. One last thing, that parking lot right along the fence that, there's all kinds of stuff going on. We witnessed an arrest at that place last summer. I think that there should be some kind of sign that says no loitering, no parking, you know, I mean, there are people live parking there, and they're facing the playground, sometimes when there are kids there, sometimes when they're not. There are rendezvous that go on there. I mean, I live, I can see, I can see this stuff going, now I'm retired, what do I do? I don't look out the window all the time, but sometimes they're there.
Lots of boards in town will get you a lot.
Well, look, I mean, I've taught in the schools for twenty-five years, I've recently retired. But make a long story short, I think a sign should be there to annoy loitering or something. I know that the police cars frequently stop there and wait and watch traffic. It's great, you know, there's traffic, but they can't be everywhere. I got one more thing. We're building a new, hope to build a new fire, police station. I hope, maybe it's too late for this time of year, but we now have a university station. If you look at the police blot in the newspaper, again, ten years ago, twenty years ago, you didn't see half of what's in that police blot. There's stuff that's really going on in this town. It's not just this town, it's our society, who knows what's going on, break-in, and you name it. I see the police being called for a lot of, a lot of stuff, and some of that stuff's happening in the, in front of the Hanlon School. The police were able to catch one person, but I've seen, we call it in, and by the time the police get there, things change and people leave. So anyways, something, something on that fence that might say, get out of here if you don't belong here.
Yeah, usually I don't say anything, but let me address a couple of things at the same time. The good news is the chief is here, he's listening to everything that you're saying.
I'm glad.
Second thing is, it was such a bad weekend at the Walshaus, but I have to tell you, that was my daughter's bus this morning.
Oh, my God.
And she was not on the bus because she had an orthodontist appointment, so that was the highlight of the good thing, the only good thing that happened this weekend. Everyone was fine, from what I understand, yes, there was a message that came out from the Thurston Road School that said everyone was fine, they were able to call their parents, et cetera, and thank you to Alice, Alice, who made that call. Second of all, I can tell you that those signs are available, and I know that we do have them in town, and now solar, so they can be put up without, because they did put up two of them on East Street at the end of Smith Drive, so that people can use them at night, especially when that corner becomes so dark. So we can talk to Todd about possibly doing that, at least at that intersection of Pine and Gay Street there. Mr. Hearn?
Chief, can you drop one of those you're going this fast signs?
Sure, yeah, we've had, we've had there in the past.
I know you have, but maybe it's time to do it again, you know? Vigilance is the eternal price we pay for free society, you know? So I think you need to drop one of those signs there, and maybe do some increased traffic control there, because that actually slows things down for a while as well.
Yeah, happy to do it. Like the gentleman mentioned, there's a ton of increased traffic everywhere. The statistics sort of reflect about it, you know, we're, we're out there a lot, all our numbers are just continuing to go up and up, and we're happy to do it. There's nothing more important for us than the schools, and I'm over at that school all the time, actually, I go there the extended day. For the record, it's now one-to-one students against the police chief in basketball, so I won't, I won't the last time I was there, so I certainly.
It was fixed.
Yeah.
It lets you win, chief.
Yeah, well, okay, I'll take it, I'll work, I'll get it.
Okay, so we will do our best to try to address those issues. Christine, let's take your notes, and I know that we have some of those things in town.
Thank you, all, thank you again.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, so we have.
I have papers, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, you can.
The sign will be down, but we don't have a, can't wait to know red, no turn on red until we get a number.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So it'll just be removed, Paul, it won't be designed?
Thank you very much. Anything will help.
Can't be removed right now.
Anything will help the public safety.
All right, we were going to go into executive session for two issues, but we've decided that we will hold the first one in open session. So next we have right of first refusal, we talked about for the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts. We have council here, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. Just to give, just to give a little bit of history, to give this perspective, as the board knows, we, the town exchanged deeds with the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts in early February, where the town acquired the Girl Scout House parcel behind Town Hall, and the Girl Scouts required, acquired a replacement parcel over next to the Hanlon School. We're in the process of finalizing the contract for the construction of the new Girl Scout House at the Hanlon School. One of the conditions of the closing that the Girl Scouts agreed to was that they would give the town the right of refusal on that Hanlon parcel, and we're not here tonight to update you on where we are on that. You know, I think we're pretty close. There are a few remaining issues, which we wanted to get some input from the board on. Just to remind you, the right of first refusal is a property right that gives the town the right, whenever, you know, where the Girl Scouts to offer the property for sale, the town could match that price and acquire the property. The, kind of the biggest issues that we're still facing have to do with the amount of time. The first one we'll talk about is the amount of time that the town would have to react to the receipt of a notice of, you know, the existence of a bona fide purchase. And we have been pushing hard, and Mike and Nora in particular, have been pushing very hard for thirty days. So in other words, the Girl Scouts would have a sign contract, they'd have to give us notice of it, and the Board of Selectmen would have thirty days to say whether they were going to try to match it. You wouldn't be obligated, because there's a, because you have to go to time being, there's a hundred and eighty days for that, and that's not controversial. But we're getting pushed back on thirty days, they were ten, they seem to now be grudgingly giving us twenty. We, our argument is, twenty is fairly typical in the commercial setting, you know, that's what I see in a typical private deal. Times a little different, you're going to deal with open meeting law, you probably want, you know, some consultation with the Finest Commission, so we're continuing to press for thirty days on that.
Say we could go with forty?
We could go, I think we started at sixty.
Go back to fifty.
Yeah, I was going to say, the more they press on that, the more the other direction.
Okay. The other, I think, biggest issue is the term. The other, I think, biggest issue is the term. You know, I originally started with a perpetual term.
I saw that.
Uh, there are some legal issues of fact. We're only as per two of these, exactly. Though there is a care of statute that has a case that will reform it. The safe harbor that we have, I mean, there's, you know, a lot of gray law on this, but the safe harbor that we have is there's a statute that says, um, our, normally restrictions only go for thirty years. Restrictions held by public entities can be good for up to fifty years, and that's what I recommend is, let's take the fifty because I know it's good, as opposed to saying something like perpetual or fifty or any of the things that create legal issues. Again, the Girl Scouts want thirty. I personally feel very inclined to, thirty is not a lot of time for, you know, a right of, that, that Girl Scout House that is behind, that was behind Town Hall is sixty or seventy years old. So thirty years is kind of a blink of an eye, so, you know, I think we should hang in at fifty years on that.
That should be limiting us. We shouldn't, I mean, I know that we like it to a certain degree overall, but we're doing the right thing for the Girl Scouts and the Girl Scouts, and we should have some of that.
Those are the big items. If you wanna touch on any of the others.
Is there a paragraph in there to, even after the right of first refusal, look for them to come back and talk to us if they want to sell?
No, but we put that in.
I'd suggest that, and I think, I think you should have that in. Because no matter when they sell it, whether it's thirty years from now, the town should have an opportunity to.
We should have an opportunity, it would be a match for the public and those companies.
Of course, you can always take it, you know exactly what the property value is.
Correct. The only other thing you can do if you get in trouble is if you agree, if they won't move to fifty, agree to thirty at the twenty-five year mark, they're gonna renegotiate with us. So we'll get to fifty dollar. And if they won't renegotiate, it gets a power limit they'll make, so, of course, only any of the three, they'll get it themselves.
You're obligated to remember depending on the statute or those fifty.
One of the trickiest parts of this is trying to build in sufficient notice so that we make darn sure that we do know when they give us notice. You know, one of the things we put in this, they're filing a notice with the town clerk.
And, and the town?
The town administrator.
And the town administrator. But in addition, you know, normal notice provision is just town administrator, but a notice of sale goes to the town clerk because that's the office that's responsible for the town records and probably the place where you're most likely to be told about it.
So dear, let me ask you this, and, and right of first refusal, okay, we're gonna sell it, and we're offering to you first. Suppose we say no first, and then they, they get an offer, and their offer is a lot less than they were willing to sell it. Do we have a right to come back and say, we?
No.
And we have to get that matched?
That's, that's something else that.
Remember all restricted free agent and?
Yeah, that's something else that we've been arm wrestling about. We have said, you know, anything for less than, you know, said it was five hundred thousand dollars. They go, oh, they have five hundred thousand dollars, we're bringing due diligence process, it gets knocked down to four eighty, which is not an unusual thing to say. We've been saying, no, you've gotta come back for a hundred percent. Usually, there's some flexibility in there. They've agreed that they'll come back so long as it's less than ninety-five percent, which I think is pretty reasonable.
So we don't need to blow them this time?
No. It's not ready.
So we're pushing it?
Thank you. At this time, we'll see.
All right, we will be going into executive session to discuss one issue related to collective, collective bylaw agreement, which will have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if the discussion were held in open session. We will not be returning to open session this evening. Our next meeting will be on?
April twenty-third.
Thank you. April twenty-fifth at seven thirty in the selectman meeting room in Town Hall. That's it for now. Thank you.
Well, I move that we go into executive session for the aforementioned reasons.
Second?
Mr. Hearn?
Aye.
Mrs. Hearn? Mr. Wilson? Aye. We're going into executive session.